He's just being the banker in the big desk.
Should we switch names?
Yeah.
I can handle that. ...... to the pledge led by...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item E, a question of approval of the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item F, special recognitions and presentations. Our first is a presentation. We have our student representatives making presentations of the Student of the Month Awards to two students from each secondary school in Petaluma Joint Union High School District for the month of January. And how this works is we have the representatives come up and introduce their Students of the Month, and I hand them a plaque, and they look into the camera while wonderful things are said about them, and then we acknowledge the families. They refer to their students. So that's kind of how it works. So if we could have the representative from Kennelworth Junior High come forward.
And Kennelworth Junior High School is pleased to introduce January Student of the Month, Mariah Libran. Mariah. Mariah is an exceptional student who has shined well at Kennelworth. She consistently achieves high grades in rigorous classes. Mariah's teachers are continuously impressed by Mariah academically and personally. They really appreciate her 100 percent homework turning. Not only is her homework complete, she takes pride in her work. Her work is thorough and it shows thought and understanding. Her homework is detailed and creative. In class, she participates enthusiastically in discussions and teamwork. She regularly volunteers in class and takes risks intellectually with her answers, often coming up with ideas and answers that amaze her teachers. Her teachers find her fun, bright, and inquisitive. They also say she's polite and works well with everyone. She's considerate of her classmates and teachers. Overall, she's said that she is a joy to have in class and truly an asset to the whole environment. Currently, Mariah's favorite class is science because she enjoys doing hands-on labs and experiments. Beyond school, Mariah has a wide variety of interests. Since last year, she spends a lot of her free time cheerleading, which she plans to continue through her high school years. She also enjoys drawing and reading a broad spectrum of literature. In the summer, she also enjoys wakeboarding on Lake Sonoma. After Kennelworth, Mariah hopes to attend Tech High, where she looks forward to the math and science focus. Her ultimate goal is to attend Stanford like her father and become an engineer. It is obvious to everyone at Kennelworth that if Mariah continues to approach life with the same thoughtfulness, diligence, and creativity that she has found to excel beyond all expectations. Congratulations, Mariah.
And we'd like to acknowledge Mariah's family for her support in helping their students to get to Stanford.
Kennelworth Junior High School is proud to introduce the other junior student of the month, Kevin Trento. Kevin has gained a wonderful reputation at Kennelworth for being conscientious and high-achieving students. Kevin earns excellent grades and is constantly maintained over a 3.5 in both years at Kennelworth. In all subjects, his teachers are impressed with his work. They say he puts in extra effort. He rises to the challenge of his rigorous courses, including geometry. They also appreciate his polite and thoughtful demeanor. His insightful participation and his constant high quality of work make him a wonderful contributor to any classroom. They say he guides the class toward production instead of distraction. They also recognize that he has a great sense of humor, which helps improve the class climate. Currently, his favorite class is science because he finds it very interesting and enjoys doing experiments. Despite his heavy homework load, Kevin has been able to successfully balance his academics while enjoying other activities in his free time. Six months ago, Kevin decided to learn the guitar, which is now a new passion for him. With his friends, Kevin enjoys playing sports like soccer and playing video games. Among his peers, Kevin is known as funny and independent. Kevin considers himself close to his family and enjoys spending time with his parents, older brother, and cousins. Kevin has big dreams for his future. He plans to continue on to a university somewhere close to home. Kevin's family, friends, and teachers are all confident in his future success due to his intelligence, dedication, and consistent effort. Congratulations, Kevin.
Okay, and Representative from Petaluma Junior High School.
Hi, I'm Ty Pearson, and Nancy Gonzalez has been chosen as the Junior Student of the Month. Nancy. A bright, hard-working, and determined student, Nancy Gonzalez, is Petaluma Junior High School Student of the Month for January 2012. Nancy's teacher holds her in high regard and greatly appreciates her personal qualities, her kindness, her respect for peers and adults, and her loyalty to her friends. They add, Nancy is thoughtful, a great listener, and is successful because she exemplifies the Petaluma Junior High School character trait self-motivated, reflecting her strong desire to learn. She is one of very few students to progress from ELD III to the top of an English A class in one year. Perhaps Nancy is so successful because of her stellar work ethic. Perhaps it is because of her talent for learning language, or maybe it is because she simply has a great memory. However, we, her teachers, feel her success is attributed to the fact that she is a complete student. She is smart, she has a great attitude, and she never skips on effort. We believe Nancy will be successful at whatever she chooses to do with her future. Nancy's success at PJHS the past three semesters has earned her Silver Renaissance Awards for maintaining a high GPA. She is also proud of the two team academic achievement awards she received at the end of seventh grade, an Academic Excellence Award in History and an Outstanding Achievement Award in Pre-Algebra. She is enjoying eighth grade, particularly her assistant job in the main office. Nancy also looks back affectionately on her experience at McKinley Elementary School, where she remembers a role as a butterfly in a play about bugs in second grade and is proud of a Rising Star Award she received as a sixth grader. During her free time, Nancy likes to swim, bike, cook with her family, and spend time with her friends. Nancy's goals are to learn as much as I can in school, to get good grades, and graduate high school successfully, and then to attend university. When asked about some important issues facing her and her peers, Nancy named the difficult issue of drug and alcohol use among young people. Nancy's parents share the following. "Our whole family is very proud of Nancy because in kindergarten she only talked with their hands," a form of sign language. "We thought she would never speak. Now she's an example of our family. She always helps her sisters with their homework, and she is an enormous support to our family." Congratulations, Nancy.
We'd like to acknowledge Nancy's family if you would please rise.
Petaluma Junior High School selected Charlie Grant as the January Student of the Month. Disappoint, intelligent, and gracious, Charlie Grant has been selected as Petaluma Junior High School Student of the Month for January 2012. Charlie's teachers thoroughly enjoy having him in the classroom. They state that he is a dependable and resourceful young man. He is consistent like a clock with his assignments. His work is high-quality, on-time, and organized. This is evident in many projects and compositions he does for both his English and history classes. Both classes give copious assignments, and Charlie never makes excuses. He just turns them in one by one, each with high quality, standard of a top-of-the-line student. He has both the rare and enviable talent of being consistent and excellent. Charlie's teachers also agree that he represents the Petaluma Junior High School's character trait cooperative, stating that he is a great classmate, friendly, fair, patient, willing to help others, generous with his resources, and a leader in small groups. Charlie's hard work and discipline are paying off at PJHS. His success in seventh grade earned him both the Gold Renaissance and Principals Honor Awards for maintaining the 4.0 GPA. This year, he has earned Silver Renaissance Award while challenging himself with the Advanced English and Algebra I. Charlie is also in the PJHS Honor Band. He enjoys playing the clarinet and is looking forward to performing with the band at the San Francisco Giants game this spring. Outside of school, Charlie loves to spend time with his friends and family and loves the outdoorsome. His family travels a lot, goes river rafting, and two summers ago spent three weeks rafting through the Grand Canyon. Charlie's greatest passion, though, is playing basketball. Charlie's plans for the future include going to college and having a career in basketball. When asked about some of the more important issues facing him and his peers currently, Charlie commented on the incredible technology that is available and given to kids my age. It can be distracting, and it can make us lazy, and can take us away from other parts of life. Charlie's parents shared the following. "We are very proud of Charlie for being selected for this honor and for being such a kind and cooperative, kind and positive person to be around. He brightens our days with his smile, humor, and cheerful approach to life." Congratulations, Charlie.
Okay, and Representative from Casa Grande High.
Hi, I'm Vivian Mears, Casa ASB president. And I'm Hannah Lincoln, Casa's area superintendent of activities. And our senior semester, Shabani DeA. A senior at Casa Grande High School, Shabani DeA is a person who enjoys challenging herself in all aspects of life. Outside of academics, Shabani is an active member of her school's golf team. In addition to her team winning the Sonoma County League and playing in the North Coast Sectionals Tournament for the third straight year, her other achievements include Rookie of the Year and becoming an All-League Player during her senior year. Shabani also loves going to school and learning new material, having taken honors in AP classes all throughout high school. This love of knowledge led Shabani to join Casa Grande's award-winning academic decathlon team, where she is currently assistant captain. For her future, Shabani hopes to attend UC Davis or Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. In major in food science, lighting her combined cooking and science, two of her hobbies and passions in life.
And we'd like to acknowledge Shabani's family. Our other student could be here tonight, so we will save it for a future meeting. And Representative from... We have three, right?
Yeah. Okay. Petaluma High School would like to honor Jenna Ross, Student of the Month for January 2012. Jenna Ross is a good student and athlete, and involved in the Petaluma High School ASB class. She has an overall GPA of 4.0 and took many AP classes throughout her high school career. This last semester, she received a 4.2 GPA. Jenna is also involved with ASB, which she enjoys very much. This is her second year, and her position is Senior Class Vice President, while last year she was a commissioner. ASB is an important part of her life, and she really enjoys her experience in ASB and her overall academic experience at Petaluma High School. Jenna is also involved in the girls varsity basketball team. She has been on the girls varsity team for two years, and this year she is team captain. She has played basketball since she was in fifth grade and is a huge part of her life. A little extra about Jenna, she is the youngest of five children. She has three older brothers and an older sister, all of which attended Petaluma High School. She enjoys reading and exercising in her free time as well as hanging out with friends. Her future goals are to attend a four-year college to study and become a nurse. Congratulations, Jenna.
Jenna's family, if you would please rise.
Petaluma High School would like to honor Zeb Kapow as January Student of the Month. Zeb has an avid interest in engineering. He has taken all of the drafting classes available at Petaluma High School as well as participating in Skills USA, where he has won bronze and gold at the state level in basic drafting and automated manufacturing, respectively. Outside of school, Zeb works at a Silicon Valley robotics company called Willow Garage, where he does software design and development. Beyond engineering, Zeb is an avid photographer. He takes photography for the school yearbook as well as in running photo booths at the dances. Zeb is also deeply involved in community service. He has been involved with Jewish Teen Foundation for four years. During his two years on the board, he helped to raise nearly $100,000 and currently serves in an advisory capacity. Congratulations, Zeb. Petaluma High would like to honor Kyle Kraft as a December Student of the Month. Kyle Kraft is honored to be chosen as Student of the Month. Kyle moved to Petaluma in third grade and was enrolled in Wilson Elementary School. He is currently a senior at Petaluma High School. He lives in town with his parents, younger sister Nicole, and his Labrador Retriever, Kristy. Kyle has been a participant and leader in all of the Challenge Days held at Petaluma High School. Following his participation in Challenge Day, he became an active member of the Be the Change Club to promote equality in the school setting. Be the Change is now Petaluma Teens for Teens Club, of which he is currently the club president. He has also participated in the Circle of Friends since freshman year. On and off campus, Kyle strongly promotes acceptance and kindness to all individuals. Kyle's true passion in life is playing his violin and sharing his love for classical music, especially his favorite style of music, the Waltz of Johann Strauss. He started playing when he was four and a half years old. He has participated in many groups, such as the Santa Rosa Symphony Youth Orchestra and the Preparatory Orchestra and the Discovery Orchestra. He is currently a student in the Preparatory Department of the San Francisco Conservatory of Music, where he takes theory classes and violin lessons. Participation in this program is earned through auditioning and being chosen from a large group of applicants. Kyle loves to share his music in classes during rallies, surprise teachers for their birthdays, and need for an inter tear his peers during lunch. Kyle put on his... Kyle put on his first own live concert, a Christmas concert at St. Vincent's Church. Kyle also shares his love for old music and TV shows with his friends. His favorite show is I Love Lucy. Kyle's newfound passion is learning languages. He is teaching himself German with the help of his grandmother and cousins over Facebook that live in Solent, Germany. He has the good fortune of traveling to Germany this summer with Ms. Chikini's group from the Petaluma High School. Kyle has many friends and teachers who will miss him and his journey experience when he graduates. We will hopefully return to visit. Congratulations, Kyle.
This is, as you can tell, the highlight of our board meetings. We have such amazing students in our district, and it's always so rewarding to hear about their successes. Right now, we will take a very short recess before our next presentation, which is a budget update, and you are all welcome to stay. But if you have homework or other activities that you need to get to, please go free to step out now.
Is it closest to, or if it's closest to without going over, would you be right? If it's...
Go over.
There's money on this.
Hi, man. How you doing? Good seeing you.
I didn't see some of your name on this.
Oh, PGSN told them to come to that meeting.
Yeah. They told them to come. So that was on our board that time.
Okay, so that is not until the 27th?
Yeah, I said, I said, go there. I said, whatever, Mitt likes to be out, but he can yell at me.
Is she up? Ah, good.
Good seeing you.
Hey, how are you?
Good, doing fine. I'm looking forward to this. I couldn't stay home.
Whoa. Okay. Okay. So, she's got it. Okay. Jane wanted to get something. Okay, so it's good. Have a listen. Hi, Luby. Can you get it through? Yes, okay. All right. And I'd like to reconvene this evening under presentation item two, our budget update that I'm sure you're all here for. Mitt Hoppin, our chief business official, will provide us an update.
Great, thank you very much. And, well, unfortunately, due to my role change, I don't get to just share the good news anymore. I get to share both the bad news and the good news. So, anyway, so here we go. Okay, themes for our budget. Okay, notice the wolf and sheep's clothing there. The theme for this budget is flat funding based on a temporary tax initiative that's going to be on the November ballot and competing probably with a lot of other initiatives on the ballot. So we'll see whether or not this happens. They're also talking about mandate reform, basically creating almost a per, some sort of per ABA funding type model or something like that, and eliminating some mandates altogether and keeping some and eliminating the mandate reimbursement process, which would be wonderful. Another theme to this proposed budget is that he's talking about returning local control to us under a new funding model called, it's referred to as the weighted-student funding model, and they would be folding in different things into our revenue limit. One example would be the EIA, Economic Impact Aid type funding, and also our K-3 class size reduction funding model, and then putting it under with basically unrestricted funding. We'll see about that and what our additional reporting requirements are. They're also talking about less student testing in this, in this proposed law. I know. Shocking that, yeah, that's one of his things, is that he wants to reduce the amount of student testing going on. I guess there was an analysis done that 10th graders are spending 15 hours in their 10th grade year doing nothing but testing, so. Also in this budget, so much for flat funding because we're taking a cut of the remainder of our transportation budget, which is another $434,000, and we took the other half in this year, in 1112, and they're taking the risk. So our total cut between the two years is over $868,000. This eliminates both home-to-school transportation and special ed. The question that has not been answered from me or for our district, really, is I don't know how they cut special ed transportation funding when there's a requirement to have a maintenance of effort of supporting those programs. And because it's a federally mandated program, both the state and the districts have to maintain that maintenance of effort. So no one's answered me on that question yet. And this program, or these two programs, are cut whether or not the initiative passes or it doesn't. This is his straight-out-of-the-gate budget proposal. When they talk about flat funding, you know, you can see all the way back to 99, 2000, you know, where our revenue limit has been funded. In 910, we took the biggest hit, and in our current year, no, yeah, 1112, we had a slight decrease. And they're talking about if this tax initiative passes, that we're going to have flat funding. If they fail, here's where we go. We wind up going in the red again. But the flat funding, again, doesn't include the fact that they're taking away transportation money, which is really fascinating. It's called new math. Redevelopment agencies, another part of his budget includes the fact that the Supreme Court agreed with them that they can dismantle the redevelopment agencies. Well, the only entity that really benefits from that is really the state because those taxes will then stay local and basically then get distributed to the local entities like school districts. Well, then, the state then has less of a requirement to backfill on our revenue limit, so they gain, there's no net gain for anybody else. And really, in the long term, I mean, redevelopment agencies, I mean, look at our downtown and what it's done for Petaluma's downtown and what it created in the way of jobs and just overall economic activity. Transitional kindergarten is not funded, and students must be five years old by November 1st in order to be in kindergarten for 1213. So because it's not funded, it's no longer mandatory, but the district is considering a program that we are optionally putting, may put in place. Put that out there. And what we've come up with after doing the numbers is that we need to have a cutoff date of the students turning five by December 31st so that at least we have a partial year of funding of ADA. So, and the oldest children who sign up will have priority. This would include, it's an all-day program, basically, a half-day preschool and half-day daycare. And then, in order to make this program work, we would need a minimum enrollment of 40 students, and they would be enrolled for the entire year. The cost to parents would be less than $200 a month for the childcare component. One of the biggest things that's happening in this budget is a tremendous cut of childcare in the state. So there's going to be a lot of parents who are looking for this type of program, given those cuts. And we think that $200 a month or less is a great bargain for all-day daycare while schools in session. So, and preschool, preschool with a certified teacher. So what it is and what it's not. What it is, it's based on, again, this November ballot initiative, and they're talking about an income tax increase on high-wage earners. And they're also talking about increasing the sales tax by a half a percent. But these tax initiatives are temporary. They're expiring in 2016. So, um, also in this budget, um, so, so much for flat funding because we're taking a cut of the remainder of our transportation budget, which is another four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. And we took the other half in this year, in, in eleven, twelve, and they're taking the risk. So our total cut between the two years is over eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. This eliminates both home to school, transportation and special ed. The question that has not been answered from, from me or for our district really, is I don't know how they cut special ed transportation funding when there's a requirement to have a maintenance of effort of supporting those programs. And because it's a federally mandated program, this, both the state and the districts have to maintain that maintenance of effort. So no one's answered me on that question yet. Um, and this program or these two programs are cut whether or not the initiative passes or it doesn't. This is his straight out of the gate budget proposal. Um, when they talk about flat funding, you know, you could see all the way back to ninety-nine, two thousand, you know, where our revenue limit has been funded. In, in nine-ten, we took the biggest hit. And in our current year, no, yeah, eleven-twelve, we had a slight decrease. And they're talking about if this tax initiative passes, that we're going to have flat funding. If they fail, here's where we go. We wind up going in the red again. But the flat funding again, uh, doesn't include the fact that they're taking away transportation money, which is really fascinating. It's new, it's called new math. Um, redevelopment agencies, another part of his budget includes the fact that the Supreme Court agreed with them that they, they can dismantle the redevelopment agencies. Well, the only entity that really benefits from that is really the state because those, those taxes will then stay local and basically then get distributed to the local entities like school districts. Well, then the state then ha, has a less of a requirement to backfill on our revenue limit. So they gain, there's no net gain for anybody else. And really in the long term, I mean redevelopment agencies, I mean, look at our downtown and what it's done for Petaluma's downtown and what it created in the way of jobs and just overall economic activity. Um, transitional kindergarten, um, cr, is not funded. And students must be five years old by November first in order to be in kindergarten for twelve-thirteen. So because it's not funded, it's no longer mandatory, but the district is considering a program that we are optionally putting, may put in place. Put that out there. Um, and what we've come up with after doing the numbers is that we need to have a cutoff date of the students turning five by December thirty-first so that at least we have a partial year of funding of A D A. So, and the oldest children who sign up will have priority. Um, this would include, it's an all-day program, basically a half-day preschool and half-day daycare. Um, and then in order to make this program work, we would need a minimum enrollment of forty students. And they would be enrolled for the entire year. Um, the cost to parents, uh, would be less than two hundred dollars a month for the childcare component. One of the biggest things that's happening in this budget is a tremendous cut of childcare in the state. So there's going to be a lot of parents who are looking for this type of, um, program, given those cuts. And we think that two hundred dollars a month or less is a great bargain for all-day daycare while schools in session. So, and preschool, preschool with a certified teacher. So what it is and what it's not, um, what it is, it's based on, again, the, this November ballot initiative. And they're talking about an income tax increase on high wage earners. And they're also talking about increasing the sales tax by a half a percent. But these tax initiatives are temporary. They're expiring in twenty sixteen. So, and I guess their hope is, is that the economy recovers by then. Um, it claims, you know, when you put it on paper, it claims that they're giving Prop ninety-eight an additional four point eight billion dollars. And that's a pretty amazing claim because not one cent is actually increasing our budget. All they're doing is paying down the deferrals that they put on the school districts to, in, in order for them to, uh, uh, maintain their cash balance and put the, the cash flow problems down at the local level. So all we're doing is getting money that they already owe us, but because of their accounting, they're actually recognizing it on the books now that they're going to use the cash. So, um, it'll be interesting how they come up with that. So if cash is king, as we've all heard, we've lost our crown. And when you look at where we were in oh-six, oh-seven, our ending fund balance of over ten point five million dollars, we had an ending cash balance of over eight point five million dollars. And that was eighty-one, over eighty-one percent of our ending fund balance was cash. Now, when we, last year when we closed the books, you could see that it's declined, declined, declined. And here we are, last year we had a record ending fund balance of over thirteen million dollars and we had less than six million dollars of it in cash. So just over forty-five percent of our ending fund balance. So as we've gone through the years and they look at us and they say, well, look at those huge ending fund balances. They can take these cuts. Well, not really, not when you're looking at it on a cash basis. We cannot. So when we look at our ending balance trends for Petaluma City Schools, and this is our best case scenario at this point with his proposal, is that we have, oh, I forgot to mention, no cost of living, uh, increase. So the three point one seven percent cost of living, uh, estimate is, we're not going to see. The hundred per, and the hundred percent transportation cut. So when we look out in thirteen, twelve-thirteen, we're deficit spending by over four point four million dollars. And with that, we have, we end up the year with just under a million dollars in unrestricted, unappropriated dollars. When you go out to thirteen-fourteen, which according to school services, we should, we're on getting the two point four percent COLA. We're still deficit spending, but not as much because we have a little bit of A D A growth and the two point four percent COLA. So our deficit spending goes down by about a million dollars. But we end up at the end of the year upside down by just under two point five million dollars of not meeting our res, our three percent reserve. So if the tax initiative fails, what happens is there's automatic triggers that occur in January. And these automatic triggers, uh, total five point four billion dollars. And regardless of whether or not the state, uh, comes back on the revenue side, we're still taking these cuts if this initiative fails. So the cuts this year were based on whether or not the revenues would materialize. And so there was, you know, a kind of a guessing game and there was still a hope. But even if their projections exceed what they're thinking, we still take the cuts. So, and again, Prop ninety-eight is taking the biggest, the lion's share of the cuts. So eighty-nine point seven percent of that gets put on Prop ninety-eight, K fourteen. U Cs and C S Us will take some cut. The courts are actually taking a little bit of a cut. And then everybody else, uh, point six percent of that, they'll eat that. So here's what we look like. I do the worst case scenario. We have no COLA, a hundred percent cut in transportation and three hundred and seventy dollars for an average unified school district. We don't have the numbers for elementary, secondary yet, but it'll be approximately that amount. So now you see that for twelve-thirteen, our, our deficit spending goes up to over seven million dollars. And this assumes that all of our things remain intact. This is assuming that we still have a hundred and seventy-seven day school year. This assumes same health and welfare benefits and salary in, uh, step and column and all other costs are the same. But just, just saying that, we're seven million dollars deficit spending. So in twelve-thirteen, now we're just under one point seven million dollars upside down in meeting our three percent reserve. And then when you get out to thirteen-fourteen, again, because we're saying, thinking that we might see a COLA and we have some A D A growth, we decreased by about eight hundred thousand dollars in our deficit spending. And we are upside down in our unappropriated reserves by over seven point eight million dollars. Thank you very much. So when we talk about recovery for California, in, uh, two thousand and seven being our baseline year here, where things started just falling, and we lost one point, over one point three million jobs. And at this point in time in twenty twelve, we've gained about three hundred thousand. So we're still upside down by over a million jobs at this point in time. So remember when they projected that we would see a full recovery by twenty fourteen, then twenty fifteen? Now it's twenty sixteen. Twenty sixteen is when these temporary taxes are set to expire because they think that we're going to fully recover. Um, but now you talk about what we have to do. We have no idea whether or not this initiative is going to pass. Last year we were a bit optimistic by thinking that the governor would be able to sway the legislature and get support for extending the already existing taxes. And he didn't. So then we had to implement or possibly implement all of our reductions that we had, uh, bargained with our bargaining units. So when you talk about the additional layoffs that we have to do now because of that seven point eight million dollar deficit out there, the gains that we're going to see, I mean, I, I think they're going to be wiped out. I can't see how they won't be wiped out. So, and, and right now their estimate is, is that, oh, just another four, four and a half years and we'll be back to where we were back in, uh, almost nine years ago. So, so what is all this buying us? Here's California's bargain basement education. So, um, they're demanding a world-class education and they expect it. Um, but when you compare California's funding to the top five, which we used to be the top, you know, like states like Vermont, Rhode Island, New Jersey and Maine, we're in the bottom now with Idaho, Mississippi, Nevada and Arizona. And what is this, the top five? Here's what their funding looks like on a per pupil basis. Sixteen to twenty-two thousand dollars per student. Their, the percent of their state resources as a percentage is in the range of four point two to six percent. And you can see here's their, this is their national assessment of educational progress. Their fourth grade, thirty-two to forty-four percent of their students are at or above proficient compared to the, the bottom five, which only twenty-two to thirty-three percent of them are at or above proficiency. And then you can see the growth from fourth to eighth grade that they're growing. And here, uh, well, they're sinking here, a little bit of gain on that end. So this is what we've, this is what we're getting for our budget. When you look at where we were, oops, let me do this one. Okay, back in, uh, oh-seven, oh-eight, we were receiving, the average unified school district was receiving five thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars per student. This line shows what we would be being funded if we received the cost of living adjustments. This is where we would be, flat funded, and this is where we are in reality. This is a lovely picture. So this is over nine hundred dollars, this is over five hundred dollars. This is where we will be if the tax initiative passes. And this is where we will be if the tax initiative fails. So what it would be just to be average, um, if we were funded at the national average, we would be getting another two thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars per student. And that's just not even at the top five, just average. Um, and you could see where, where we, where we have been and we're sinking to an all-time low. And this, if we were funded at our national average, we would be funded at seven million dollars above what our Prop ninety-eight money should be. In other words, if we were funded here, we would be getting another seven million dollars on top of that. Our district, our district would be getting another seven million dollars. So instead, this is what our funding really looks like. Um, if we received the cost of living adjustment, that's nine hundred and twenty-one dollars per student totaling over six point six million dollars. If we didn't take the revenue cuts, in other words, this line here, we would be getting just under four million dollars additional money. So those two amounts total ten point five million dollars. If we take the three hundred and seventy dollar loss, if the tax initiative fails, we will be receiving over thirteen million, we're not receiving, we won't be receiving thirteen point two million dollars of money just to be funded based on Prop ninety-eight. And that totals about eighteen hundred and fifty dollars, eighteen, one thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars. So my closing thoughts on all of this after presenting this to you is that, um, starting back in oh-eight, oh-nine, we took a hit of sixteen percent five years ago. Education has taken the largest hits in the budget and sustained the hits and keep coming, they keep coming back for more. No other segment or group in the state budget has taken anywhere near a representative cut based on their share of the quote-unquote state budget pie. And some, believe it or not, as our teachers and staff and everyone else is taking pay cuts, benefit cuts, shortened school days for our students, some segments of the budget have actually seen increases. So it shows you where pr, uh, education is as a priority in our state budget. So, um, yes, here's our, here's, here's our future, sitting there wondering where we go from here. So, um, that's it, and, and see you later on, that's it. And, sure.
Can we go back to the student of the month report?
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree. I like that one, you're better. And yeah.
Do you guys have any, um, questions or comments?
Mitch, I want to ask a question, I have a question. Did your numbers take, is that just California specific, it's not taking in the underfunding that we incur suffered from the Fed?
No.
Say for our special ed programs and stuff, they don't completely, so that didn't take any in?
I mean, no, it doesn't. So it's just That's just our funding period.
We're lending money both ways, right?
Yeah, pretty much.
State of California to the Fed.
Pretty much.
I, I guess the comment I would have is, this coming year, we're going to have a whole bunch of people that are going to come into this boardroom and it's going to be the art program against the ag program. It's going to be the sports program against the band program. And it's going to be this group of folks who want, the same funding that they had last year compared with the other group of folks who want the same funding that they had last year, and there's no funding. And so I just kind of want to remind everybody that the battle isn't necessarily here. The, the battle is really in Sacramento. If you look at the numbers, there aren't any. So to me, this is just so devastating because what it does is it just tears the community apart. And that's what it's going to do. It's happened every year that I've been here. Uh, I think I started with a declining budget and all it does is bring this side of the room against that side of the room and it just, it, it, it's crazy. It, it's just, to me, it's just so disappointing and disheartening. If for no other reason, we're jobbing our kids and we're jobbing our community because it just tears everybody apart. And I just want to reiterate to everyone else and anybody that may be listening, the battle isn't here. The battle is ninety miles to the east.
And the reason the battle isn't here, and, and it really is there, is they are, the, when they make cuts in the budget, they pass the, the hard work on to school districts. Instead of cutting the budgets that they actually control, um, they don't. They just keep the budgets they have, or if they do adjust it and they run over, they run over. And they know that they're not the ones facing the parents and the teachers and all the other staff. They just say, we're not going to give you that money. Good luck. May the force be with them. Yeah.
And, and the other thing everybody needs to know is the state gives us a lot of unfunded mandates where they mandate by law that we have to do certain things. And it just takes the latitude out of our hands. And there's also a big restricted fund component that we can't use for any other things. So it, it really handicaps anytime you sit down and try to do a, a budget review at the local level because it's all coming from the high and we don't have any input other than through C S B A or what have you. So Troy makes a great point. The more people that aim their anger and their ire at ninety miles east, the better, I think. It's, the only thing that ever wakes anybody up up there is, how many votes is, are out there? That's what, that's the only thing I've ever seen, that and a lot of money lobbying, which most people at this level don't have. So.
I just added one other thing, and now I'm preaching to the choir, I'm going to look out in the audience here. But, um, having been in private industry for twenty-five years, I know that people sitting at home, people not involved in the process, people who don't come to these meetings, people who don't read these, and we all do, which is our budget and the financial report for the year, there's a tendency for layfolk to think that anything that has to do with government is run completely inefficient and that the, the employees are, uh, you know, don't work as hard as the private sector and that, uh, you know, the money is just wasted. And having been in this district for six or whatever years now, and having been a product of this district, and have children in this district and parents and grandparents of this district, I can tell you that this is one of the most efficient run organizations I've ever seen and how the administration does what they do with what they have. Uh, it makes me go to work every morning and feel lucky that I have the, the staff that I have, which is I think actually for a much smaller organization, three or four times bigger than what you have. Uh, it, it, it makes, uh, the perception is not the reality. And I just want to make sure that people understand that.
And the, 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 the biggest chunk of our budget is people. And it's the people that do the work, that serve the kids. And so when we have to cut budget, and what's the percentage, eighty?
Probably eighty-five percent.
Yeah, yeah. And so it affects all of us, um, those decisions because it's real people contributing everything to the kids. And, um, we just don't know where, where it's going to come from. I mean, it's just people. And that's where he's talking about it, splitting the community. Because every single person in our, who works in our district is adding value. And so to have to cut is just, it's heartbreaking. Well, okay, thank you Mitch.
I am Jean, approval of the minutes, January tenth, two thousand and one.
Seven.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item H, comments from the public. I have several parts, I would like to start, oh, I guess I have to read the paper. Hang on. Under Government Code, section five four nine five four point three A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest relating and relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. In accordance with Board Policy BP nine
In accordance with Board Policy BP nine three two three, each speaker is allocated a total of five minutes to address the board for a maximum of twenty minutes on each subject matter. While the above referenced government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a current policy, VP AR one three one two, specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the first, that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employees in media supervisor for investigation. The board does not take action or discuss items not appearing on the agenda. The board values public comments and wishes to convey that although board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda, they listen carefully and appreciate and value input from the public. So we have, um, some speaker cards on subjects that are on the agenda, so we will bring those forward at that time on the agenda. But right now, I have Libby Fitzgerald and Kurt Chow. And if you would like to come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, hi, I'm Libby Fitzgerald with Petaluma Valley Rotary Club. Address is, uh, one fourteen Suncrest Hill, Petaluma.
And I'm Kurt Chow with Petaluma Sunrise Rotary, at one oh six Dollar Place in Petaluma.
All right, so we're here with some good news.
Good news, come on, some good news.
There are no budget cuts from Rotary this year. So that's what we're here about. Uh, we're representing, um, actually the three Rotary Clubs in Petaluma in our Lend a Hand Education Program. This is our eighth year. And our goal in this program is to give teachers mini-grants that are two hundred dollars or less because these are usually the projects that are under the radar screen of P E F. And often, teachers have taken these monies out of their own pocket. And, um, so this year, I'm pleased to say that we have funded teachers in Petaluma School District a total of six thousand nine hundred sixty dollars. Two hundred dollars was already given before the holidays for the little toy project. And so Kurt has the check here for superintendent.
Steve's ready for it, right?
I'm gonna take it.
I do, I've got a check here for Steve.
Should we give it to Mitch?
I don't know, I don't know, this is one of the teams, six thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. So if the eighth year will keep doing it, uh, it's a great program. And in fact, this is a note, overall, with the other school districts, we raised, uh, over, it was over eleven thousand dollars this year for teachers, all three of the communities. We're glad to do it.
Oh, thank you very much. And I have here my packet, uh, certificates for all of the teachers who received the grants. That would be thirty-seven different grants in all of the schools and the districts. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And that's what we have here.
And the board has the list.
Wow, that's just, I mean, to, to see the impact on each of these sites is fabulous. And, um, we really appreciate the community and all that you do to try to help our kids.
Well, kudos to the teachers.
Yes. Yep, thank you very much.
All right.
Uh, yeah, that was a nice, nice, uh, follow-up.
Well enough, so let's keep it going.
Let's keep it going, yeah, okay. So now, um, item I, reporting activities in correspondence to school board members. Um, there's a valuable site visit, Kellington volleyball game, and basketball announcing along with another Rotary Club activity.
Yes, for those who don't know, um, I'm with, uh, Petaluma Rotary Club. Um, also with the Lend a Hand, our group, and they, they spearheaded that, the Valley and the Sunrise Club. There's three clubs in Petaluma. Um, and there was a, a great idea germinated in our club by a guy named Harvey Freely to give every third grader in Petaluma Schools a dictionary. And that has been going on for quite some time. So, uh, I had the privilege, uh, as I have periodically in the past, of handing out dictionaries to third graders. I happen to be over at Grant School, but it, it is going down in every school. And so every third grader gets a dictionary. And it was the, the, uh, concept of one man who unfortunately, uh, Harvey Freely has since passed, but it's been carried on and now it's being pushed across the nation. So, uh, these kids love getting the dictionaries, the teachers are fantastic about having them lined up. So each child gets a, a personalized dictionary to, to take with them and hopefully, uh, use it. And we all know how important literacy is, so we got to do that. And it's, it's a pleasure seeing those little third graders, open them up.
Thank you. Okay, item J, um, approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion.
So moved.
So.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All consent until we get to item seven. Um, discussion, possible action for boards, the board's consideration, discussion and possible action of Board Bylaw nine thousand as it relates to the hiring of superintendent. First, we'll have our, some discussion, and then we have some people who would like to provide input during the discussion, so we're following it, so thank you very much. We will, I will call your names as we get to that. So, on page twenty-five. Um, Board Bylaws nine thousand, the role of the board, powers and responsibilities, superintendent employment and evaluation states. The board shall be solely responsible for employing the superintendent and ensuring that he, she is the best match for the district based on needed abilities, traits, and level of knowledge. When selecting a new superintendent, the board shall ensure a smooth transition period, evaluate the district's current and long-term needs, plan and conduct a process for recruitment, screening, and selection, and approve the superintendent's employment contract. The board shall regularly evaluate the superintendent based on an evaluation system and perform objectives established by the board and superintendent. Um, a year ago, we had our, uh, prior superintendent retire, or announce her retirement. And, um, this board, uh, made the decision at that time to hire Steve Bowman as an interim superintendent. And another year has passed so quickly. So now we have the, uh, we are in a position where we have to decide what's next for the district. Um, so, we need to look at what our options are. And, um, there, you know, I see three, three distinct options that I'd like us to discuss. Uh, the first is to continue with Steve as an interim superintendent, to consider hiring him as a regular superintendent, or to go out for service through a recruitment process. Are there any other options that you guys see?
Mm-hmm.
No.
Okay, so, does anybody like to, like to discuss?
Talk about the recruitment process.
Um, recruitment process would be, um, we would have to consider hiring a service um, to recruit, uh, whether throughout the state or nationally, um, to, to provide, uh, you know, a pool of applicants that would meet the needs of our district.
And this generally, this, um, company that we would have to hire, generally in the past, they, it's been in the neighborhood of twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars.
Right, we discussed that last year as well.
What of the time, how long does it take?
Um, well, you know, it, it, not an outrageous amount of time, but it's, the timing of it is important because this is the time of year that other districts are going out to look for, uh, new administrators. And so that's why we're, we have it on the agenda tonight because, um, we have to, um, make a decision, you know, sooner rather than later to have the best option if we want to go out for recruitment of the candidates and who's out there, so.
You know that in the recruitment process, a lot of times you have the entire group of candidates and none of which are super.
Right.
And that's something to think about also.
Um, do we know, um, who, uh, what other districts are looking? Does anybody know? Steve, Jane, have you heard?
I, I have not heard.
No, I think...
There won't be as many this year.
As last?
Yeah.
Be as many as last year.
Yeah, last year was kind of a record year.
Was mine or...
Yeah, um, I, I've heard of possibly one, maybe two.
Okay.
And...
That sounds good.
Yeah, okay.
Now, didn't Rona Park recently hire a new intern? I don't know.
Yeah, Rona Park at their last meeting, um, they had hired an intern for six months. And at the last meeting, they, um, hi- they hired him as their superintendent. I believe they eliminated the interim title and gave him a contract.
As far as I know.
At least they extended his con- contract, either as an interim or as a new superintendent for, for their district.
Okay. The other thing that, um, has to be included in our consideration is, um, the fact that we are in the beginning process of a consolidation study with Olden Doby School District. So, we have to keep that in mind, that over the next couple of years, that will become an issue, or potentially become an issue, so.
And that consolidation study is a couple of year process?
It is, it's just about a two-year process. So, you know, it's not really, um, now that we know how long it takes, we didn't know this a year ago when they had approached us. Um, but now that we know it's definitely gonna take a couple of years, it's not as, um, the timing of it isn't quite as impactful as we thought it might be.
So based upon this agenda item, just walking through, we have three, considering three courses of action, what would the end result be tonight on all three? So let's say that, um, the consensus of this board was, we need to go out and recruit.
Right.
Would we agree, would there be a motion to agree to go out and recruit as of tonight? Or is that a, another, is this simply discussion, or?
No, we, we could, we could agree, we could make a motion because we have, um, provided the option to take action in the agenda as it's written.
Okay, so similarly, we would also have the, uh, we could also have the option to agree to, uh, pursue Steve on an interim basis, or agree to pursue Steve on an department basis.
Correct. Okay.
So with our discussion and the motion that needs to be made now, on what the process is going to be, I'm confused as to what will happen in closed session and what is to happen out here.
Right.
Because it seems to me like it's a two-step process. We gotta consider whether he's gonna stay on his, on his interim and why, or regular hire and why, or not.
Right.
And then depending on what happens there, we have to decide what we're going to do next.
Right, right, but the, what we're, the discussion item now is about the process. What would we like to see for this district? Do we want to continue on the path we are currently on? Do we want to consider bringing in new, um, a new superintendent to, you know, work in a, in an either a new direction or in a different way with what, where we're going? So that's, that's what's, the current thing is what, which path do we want to take as far as the options of, um, recruitment? That's what the pu- the open session item is.
So I would see, I would see the action as being, I, I would see the action as being one of two things. The, you're either going to, through the discussion, um, have a motion in the second and an action to appoint, and then you would, um, discuss that in closed session, or you're gonna have an action to, um, go, to go out and recruit.
Right.
Is there any reason there that the action has to be taken prior to us hearing input from the community?
No. I think that would be... I think it's probably a good time to have some public input onto, um...
And we have community.
That's why we have community, thank you for coming. Okay, um, I have Karen McGahey. Would you like to have him forward? And if you would, uh, state your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, my name is Karen McGahey. Uh, my, mainly my address is one zero zero one Cherry Street. Most of my time. Kids frequently ask me where my bed is. But actually, my address is in Bodega Bay, two ninety highway rings, Bodega Bay. It's a great address. Um, I'm here, and I, I'm a little confused about whether I should be addressing the process as well as, as... I'm here speaking on behalf of the elementary principals. We actually had a meeting today and we, um, reached consensus about our feelings about this process. And so I'm a little confused about whether I should speak directly about, um...
We're gonna hold this out together, so go for it.
Thank you, um, we had a, we had a full discussion this morning at our elementary principals' meeting about our feelings about this process and our feelings about who we think is the best person to represent our district. Um, and I wanna say, right out of the chute, when, when Steve was appointed, I was a little bit shocked because he was not an educator. But since then, everything that Steve has done has proved, uh, proven that this is a man who is really committed to the people of this district. Uh, from our point of view, Steve is really committed to people and to kids. Um, I had, I had one of the principals say to me, "Whenever I talk to Steve about something that has to do with children, that has to do with the kids in this district, he finds a way to make it happen." And, and I, that is universally our appreciation for Steve is that he really puts the children and the people, the employees of this district first. I've had the privilege of serving with Steve on the budget committee for, oh god, I don't know how many years. I don't know if it's a privilege or not. But, and also working with Steve on negotiations. And, um, I, again, I would just like to reiterate that people are first with Steve. And that is the most important thing for us as elementary principals. We have, as you know, I, I'm the most senior elementary principal in the district. I may be the most senior principal in the district, which is awful thing to have to admit. But, um, we have quite a few new elementary principals. And universally, these principals are saying, "I can pick up the phone, I can just call Steve. If he's not available then, he's gonna call me back. And if he doesn't know the answer, he knows where to direct me to find the answer." So we have all of these new, young principals who feel as if their superintendent is accessible to them and is ready and available to help them with anything they need. And universally, they said, and I don't feel like I'm silly for asking the question, that I can call and ask him anything and he, he treats me with respect and I feel like it's being honored. Um, we, we also feel like that in this really troubling financial time, who better to represent our district than someone who has shepherd us, shepherded us through as many fiscal crises as Steve has shepherded us through? He has a deep and thorough knowledge of our district and not only the financial side of the district, but what has become really apparent to me in this past year of working with Steve as a superintendent is that he really knows and appreciates his employees as well. So, at this time, I think having someone who knows this district so intimately is a really important thing when we're looking at who should be, um, at the helm here in our district. Um, we find that Steve is open to suggestions. On a very personal level, Steve was instrumental in, in, in getting Mary Collins School converted to a charter. And since then, in my, in my tenure, this is my seventh year there, I have felt nothing but support from Steve in, in the workings. And a lot of flexibility because there's a lot that had to be, a lot of flexibility that Steve had to have to negotiate with us in order to make our charter successful. And a lot of times, all I had to do, maybe I had to butt heads with Steve a little bit to say, "You've gotta do this for me, you've gotta give me the flexibility here." And he was always willing to listen, he was always open to suggestions. And I have never felt that he was anything but a hundred percent behind the success of this charter school. And I think I can speak for all the elementary, all the elementary principals who would say exactly the same thing, that he's behind them, he's going to, he's come to my school for budget presentations, a lot of times when it was not exactly comfortable, and, and, and left, and left the room with people thinking, "He's really here for us. He's really, he's hearing us and he's really here for us." So I just wanted to speak on behalf of all the elementary principals and say that we feel strongly that Steve Bowman is the purpose, person who should be leading our district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff McNear Elementary. If you would just state your name and address for the record, please? If you would just state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Mary Beth Cohen and I'm a teacher at McNair Elementary, six twenty seven E Street, Petaluma, California. And I'm here tonight with my colleagues, Mary McBurn and Amanda Doughty. And we would like to speak to you, we brought a letter from our whole staff. And what we'd like to share with you tonight really is about the qualities of, of a top-notch administrator. So, this is a letter I'd like to read from our entire certificated staff. As the board considers the hiring process for our next superintendent, we would like to weigh in with our opinion on the qualities of a top-notch head administrator. We have heard it said that our school district is a very good district and that a goal is for it to become a great district. No one can argue with that. To that end, the selection of our next superintendent must be made with careful consideration of the type of leadership and experience that will be needed to achieve this goal. We believe that our superintendent must be a person of vision, most especially in the areas of curriculum and instruction. We feel that our superintendent must be someone who recognizes that each school within our district has its own personality and characteristics. Since the enactment of No Child Left Behind, we are increasingly being asked to use program improvement as a model for all schools, even those that have been designated as distinguished and/or national blue ribbon schools. We do not believe this is in the interest, the best interests of all students, especially since this model has not helped move, move schools out of program improvement. During the time that Chuck Cadman was superintendent, teachers were asked for their expertise in reviewing and designing curriculum. The superintendent visited classrooms to actively seek teacher feedback. Members of the school board regularly visited schools and talked directly with teachers about what was working and what improvements could be made. We would like to see a return to this kind of hands-on involvement and respect for teachers professionalism. In the past, our district has distinguished itself by developing the shared decision-making model. And we believe our next superintendent should hold true to these principles. We hope our next superintendent will have an open door policy with office hours for both the public and school personnel. We hope our next superintendent will be someone who trusts committee work and follows through with shared agreements and decisions. We hope our next superintendent will be someone who trusts and values teacher collaboration. And I brought copies that we'd like to, we'd be happy to give to you all. And ten, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. And next we have Stephen Collins.
Thank you. I'd like first to say how eloquent the teachers and principals in their presentation, very, very nice. I'd also like to thank the board for doing the work you do, given the budget tonight. We are so lucky in this community to have the board that we have and the boards that we have had over the years. I'd also like to tell you that your appointment of Steve Bowman as an interim really showed your wisdom and foresight. At the time that that happened, I knew that you made the right decision, even though there are some that said that they weren't so sure, you heard some of that tonight. You did make the right decision, you also made the right decision with Mitch Hoffman, she's doing a great job and she was well-prepared for this. I would urge you to take the, I think it was the third option, and that is to appoint Steve Bowman to a full-term assignment as superintendent. I also think hearing what the teachers from McNair just said, that he would fulfill all of those, all of those expectations that they have. And I say this on the basis that in the early nineteen nineties, when Steve first came to the district, I started working with him at that time when I was Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. And he has been consistent all the way through. And his consistency has to do with not only watching the bottom line, which was his job, but to consider the product. He always considered the product, the education of the children. That, my friends, in my experience as an educator and as an administrator, is relatively unique for business managers. Usually, they're looking at how we save money regardless of how it comes out for kids. Steve has always been a kid advocate and we heard some of that tonight. When he was appointed, he made it very clear to the teachers and to others that would listen, that he was eager to learn, that he does this by listening. And, and especially, he listens, I believe, to teachers who are the experts. Tonight, you read, Ms. Shafer, you read the bylaw and your obligation is to find the best match according to that bylaw. Steve Bowman is the best match.
Thank you. As our speakers were speaking, a thought that had popped up, I had thought of this earlier, but was reminded. One of the questions that had come up last year regarding our appointment was the fact that Steve does not have an administrative credential, is that correct? The one we had to have, do a waiver for. And because he has not been a teacher in the traditional sense, some people felt that that might limit his abilities to be a leader in the, in the district. One of the things that I have learned in the private sector, in the work that I do, is that running an organization of eight hundred employees and a sixty-plus million dollar budget takes more than somebody who is taught in classroom. It, it, it's, it's a very complex job. So, I, I wanted to make that comment here because I think it's really important that the largest employer in Petaluma, Petaluma City Schools be well-run. And Troy has mentioned how efficient this district has been run in our budget discussion, so just wanted to make that comment.
So, I'm toying with how to, how to navigate through this and I'm a, and a newborn member, this is quite a tall task and issue.
But this is also, you know, a tall task for the entire board because this is the most important job that we have.
Let me finish my sentence.
Okay.
So, so my issue is, I have, we discussed wanting to have complete transparency in this process. And so, I have a lot of comments that I don't wanna necessarily discuss. I mean, I'm not sure where the boundaries are at closed session items and what we can discuss in regard with the current superintendent and how he runs this district. So, I have a lot of things I wanna talk about and just guide me through.
Okay.
One of the things I wanna remind people that I'm learning is that he works for us. And so, curriculum and, and you could read in our, in our board policy, the board is responsible for establishing academic expectations and adopting curriculum and instructional materials and specifying graduation requirements, adopting and developing curriculum and ensuring compliance with state federal laws. One of the things I'm not hearing at all from anyone is pretty much anything. It's, it's, it's quite not what I heard during campaign time, that people had issues and things they wanted addressed. And I'm not sure where those people are. So, I find myself a little frustrated that if somebody doesn't like the way the district, district is being run, they're not telling me. The emails are on the website now, that was a big complaint, I checked it up until four o'clock today. I know that the, the union president sent out an email to all staff. I really appreciate the people that showed up here tonight, I really appreciate you getting together and discussing it amongst yourselves and presenting something on behalf of, of groups of people. Cause I'm just not hearing anything unless I am beating people down and knocking on classroom doors, which I'm trying to do, but it's a lot of people. So, so that's something that concerns me. I have a lot of faith in Steve, I have a lot of faith in the open door policy that he does have and the questions he does answer. One, one group of people that weren't represented here tonight, well, some people may have children, but a parent group didn't come up. And I was fortunate enough to get something volunteered in a park the other day by a bunch of parents, asking me about the superintendent and what the process is going to be and how thrilled they were with the current superintendent and actually compared to past superintendents. And didn't really know a lot of the controversy or politics or not staff in the district, just mentioned, no, I really like that this superintendent does, that the other one comes around more and is really open to questions and. So, that was good and was not from my own children's school and not people that I knew well. And it was perfect timing because it was just last week and I, and I told them I would bring that up here tonight. Steve recently had an evaluation and he's done some fabulous things, we also had constructive criticism and he takes direction very, very well. And is always looking to work through any issue or problem and take it on. The other issue is cabinet, I've asked around too about, since there's his, him not being a teacher issue, well, how's Jane doing? Are people happy with who he's choosing to, to carry other ends of things? And I've heard nothing but positive things about his cabinet staff. I'm hearing it again about Midge tonight and about Jane. And that's important because if he's going to rely on other staff, then we need to be looking at that other staff and how well they're doing. And they seem to be doing a very good job. And again, I'm only hearing positive things. The cost of the search is an issue, we don't have any money, that's an issue for me. And that's it, I think these are the things I want people to know in transparency, being transparent with what I'm thinking going into this decision tonight. One of the things in our board policy says there must be a smooth transition with the new hire. That's something as well. And he's seen more than just one superintendent, I think that's important to say that he's worked under different superintendents and he can take the good and get rid of the bad in his perspective in compliance with what the board wants. And I think that's really important that he has that experience.
I, I'm a big fan of, of hiring from within. I truly believe that in big organizations, it's, whether you wanna use a sports metaphor, the backup quarterback or, you know, in, in, in real life, the assistant principal, the vice president of a bank, or the deputy superintendent. That if those people are doing a good job at that level and studying under the people that, that hopefully they respect above them, and even if it's sometimes a, a, a negative situation, there's a lot to be learned on what not to do. And I'm, I'm huge on that, both for efficiency, smooth transition, and quite frankly, for the continuity within the organization. My read on people is, they like familiarity, they like knowing who they're gonna be involved with and knowing what, what the pecking order is and how it's gonna go. In these kinda times, we all know, she, Midge just laid it out for us, the last thing you wanna start doing is rocking boats. Well, for financial reasons, for morale reasons, it's hard enough, I imagine, on certified and classified, you know, a lot of uncertainty, they've lived under it with the sword of democracy hanging over them. And the last thing I think they would want would be uncertainty or, or we have a process that's in upheaval. The, the second thing is, I really believe that in these times, fiscal stewardship is paramount. I felt like Steve Bowman as the interim was, quite frankly, a no-brainer. He, he's got a great reputation and, and nothing he's done during this process has, has dissuaded me that, that anybody who ever said anything blowing about him was wrong. So, what you look for, at least I do, when we have accountability, you look for, quite frankly, Sherry alluded to it. And I represent a lot of small businesses in, in, in numerous employees. And when it comes to accountability, what you look for is, is the person handling their job, are they handling their assignments? And I think a direct reflection of that is what Sherry said, there is nobody here complaining. I've mentioned it to more than one person, I was on Parks and Rec and there were more people that showed up about dog leash issues or the petonk park than at one meeting than I've seen entirely. And I think instead of looking at that like a slam on everybody, I think it's a testament to not just the interim superintendent, but, but the staff, the teachers, the, everybody, the classifieds, everybody who's involved. It means that there must be a pretty good product being delivered and people aren't incited, and that's a good thing. Now, if people wanna come and make positive suggestions or even constructive criticism, we're all big people, we can take it. But I think it's a testament to leadership when people aren't at the door with, with a lot of complaints. And so, I, I reward that. And I, if I'm gonna be accountable, I think the process needs to at least assure me that we're gonna have somebody that is worth kind of supporting and sticking our claim on. Because again, ultimately, we're responsible, this board is responsible, and I take that very seriously.
And just to add, when we made the appointment, I was very happy to make the appointment because I thought, what do I know about hiring a superintendent? I don't even know what they do yet. The night I took office, the superintendent announced her retirement. So, I was not in a hurry to go out looking for something when I didn't know what I would be looking for. And then throughout this period, I told people, this is the time, this is a job interview for Steve Bowman. This is the time to push any envelope with him and the board that you want pushed. This is the time to call us and say, you know what I've always hated, you know what I've always loved, you know it's not working, you know what I don't like? I didn't, I didn't get any. When I asked, I got all positive feedback. And any issues that have come up that I've had questions on or that somebody hasn't liked something, never would be superintendent, but with the district and I've come to Steve, I've got my questions answered, he's made phone calls, he's, you know, worked through any issue that I've had as a new board member or issues that I've heard from staff or from parents. So, I really feel that if there is something someone doesn't like about this district, together with the superintendent, we can, can get things done.
I could add maybe one more thing, I've been on this board for a number of years, so I've had a lot of superintendents that we've worked with. And whenever you have a new superintendent on board, there is a transitional period. And this particular time in the district is the last thing that I want, is a transitional period, someone who has no knowledge of the history of the community, no knowledge of the staff that they will be working with. And quite frankly, the financial issue for me far outweighs any concern initially that any of the staff might have had, is Steve not having an educational background. Because the bottom line is, we are going, we are in tough times and I don't believe it's gonna get better very quickly. And I think we need Steve as a superintendent and Midge obviously working in the capacity that she has been working lately, but Steve knows money. Steve understands budget and sometimes we've had superintendents that were not that knowledgeable in that area, so that's what I wanted to add.
I guess it's me, huh?
Yeah.
I think I'm probably all over the place here, but I'll try to wrap it all into one straight thought. My first experience with this district was as a member of, as a civilian or whatever you call it, I'm a member of a committee called a district, correct me if I'm wrong, liaison committee that was part of a process put together to hire the superintendent, at that time it became Greta Vey. And there were, in this room, I think twenty-five of us and we were, and I believe already, you may have been in on this, I think.
I was on the hiring.
I think the first time I met you, I think, cause there was a couple of people from classified, a couple of people from certificated, a couple of community members, a couple of parents.
We had a student.
There might, there was like one or two students, there was about twenty-five of us, we all sat in here and there was a, a person who hand-held us all the way through this process. This was a community committee put together to screen candidates to then make a recommendation to the board. So, it was a process put in place. And I actually ended up chairing that committee. I think I, there was an awkward silence when they asked for a volunteer and I just stuck my hand up. It was to me very eye-opening in the sense that I've hired a number of people in my life. This was, that particular process, I felt although I was proud to be a part of it and would do it again in a heartbeat, I didn't find it to be effective, that particular process. We had a canned list of questions that everybody got. We had three people parade in who had obviously been through these things before, they had a pretty good idea what the question was going to be, and then they got handed all the questions. And so, we asked these candidates questions and, and they responded. And quite honestly, I got pretty much nothing out of it other than sort of a beauty pageant, if you will, of how somebody.
if you will, of how somebody can react in front of a group of twenty-five people. An important component of hiring a superintendent, but clearly not the most important component at all. The board, I assume, went through the same process, I was not a part of the board obviously at the time, but the board went through the same process of asking basically canned questions to these candidates after we got done making a, I guess we call it a recommendation, Carolyn, because it basically came back with a committee. Carolyn, you were the only one there at the time. Geez, the committee really liked Ms. Vagay. I think that was the recommendation at the end of the day. I'm generally all about process. I'm generally all about putting out a nationwide search for anybody that we would hire of the magnitude of the superintendent. I also believe, when we talk about the magnitude of the superintendent, that, and I've said this, I think, since day one, when you look at the numbers, when you look at the responsibility of our children, when you look at a thousand employees and seventy-five hundred children, when you look at the amount of property that this district owns and manages and runs in the city, when you look at the entire package of what Petaluma City Schools are, this is the biggest business by far in town. This is, I think, the most important business by far in town. It creates the most important product manufactured in this town by far. And the person writing it needs to be the most important, best-suited person for this job. I quite honestly can't come up with, Steve's not perfect, but he's really, really, really close. And I was trying, when I put myself into this position of what I think we should do with regard to this, to this very, very important task, of trying to figure out who the better candidate would be in my mind. Because clearly, it would have to be somebody that we don't know, or at least that I don't know, because I can't come up with somebody that I do know that would be better. So, this would have to be somebody that would be completely different. This is the most important thing that we do. This is what we are elected to do. I don't know that I could take a flyer on somebody that I did not work with for seven years to feel good enough about hiring that person based upon the true level of real due diligence that I would be able to do. Because I've seen what is done. And I just think what we do is way too important to take that flyer of, hey, maybe there is somebody out there dramatically better than Steve for this district at this time. I don't believe it to be the case, quite honestly, because I've worked with Steve. But I don't think it's a risk worth taking at this point, not where we are as a district and not based upon what we would be able to do to take that risk. Everybody has, this job for me has been so enlightening because, enlightening, excuse me, because having lived here all my life, basically, and we're talking about our kids, and I have children in this district, even things as simple as a calendar or even things as simple as where a crosswalk needs to be or, with seventy-five hundred kids, every parent has an opinion. And that opinion tends to be, for all the right reasons, I believe, focused on their And that goes the same with, well, I guess what I want to say is, it's the job of this board to take all seventy-five hundred of those kids and put them together and say what's best for all of them. And in the work environment, there are going to be people who have agreements and disagreements about the way things are run. And that's healthy. And the most important thing that we can do in that environment is make sure that it's a culture that allows those disagreements to come to the surface, be mixed around, talked about, considered, and again, the best thing for our children be done. It's our job to do what's best for everybody. It's our job to do what's best for the district as a whole. There will always be disagreement, it's hard. There are arguments and debates you'll never win because we're talking about individual interests, but our job is the interest of everybody. And in that interest, I, as much as I'd like to say I'd love to go out and conduct the world's greatest search and interview and do all those things, I don't believe that we'd find anybody better than Steve at this point. So, that's my opinion.
Okay. Well...
So, I was going to say, based on that, I don't know what the action is. Can I suggest an action?
Yes, absolutely. We have no rule, I mean, we set the rules, so you...
This could be a long one. I would suggest, and I don't know if this is how this process works or this is the best way to go, but something along the lines of hiring and firing, am I understanding it as a closed session?
Yes, it is.
But I would suggest that we entertain a closed session to consider hiring Steve Bowman on a permanent basis.
Need a second, Mary? Second.
Now.
Now.
Can I ask a question?
Of course you can.
Okay. So, if we were to do that, that would be, obviously not in this meeting, or would it be?
If we actually have...
It could be.
We have...
It's on closed session.
A closed-session item that has consideration of employment, and that could mean for employment or not employment.
Okay.
Well, as far as shaping the process, do we have to say considering hiring Steve Bowman, or do we say considering hiring our interim superintendent as far as the process goes?
Going back to where, there's a closed session.
I think the action would be, if I'm hearing the board correctly, that the board is taking the action to appoint the superintendent. And then in closed session, you can discuss the appointment of the superintendent. And of course, as with all action in closed session, we report out.
Right. Okay. So, we have this...
So, I'll make the motion.
Close thing.
Take a beer. Go ahead.
That the board, I move that the board move a closed session to consider appointing the superintendent.
Second.
Okay. Discussion, yeah? Questions?
Yes.
This agenda was published?
Yes.
On?
Friday.
This agenda was emailed to everybody that was supposed to get a primary?
Yeah.
Is there anybody that wanted to be here that we're aware of that was not here tonight?
Have you heard anything?
No.
I see Loretta here as the...
CFT.
CFT here.
Yes, Laurie's here.
Oh, hey, there you are. I'm sorry. See the... Is there, before we go to, before we go to closed session, will there be public comment? Are there available for public comment going into closed session?
I can announce one because...
I'm just going back to transparency.
Yep.
I'm writing details on transparency. I'll make sure that everybody who has opinion, voices of opinion.
I will make sure that that's announced. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and second. But before we go to closed, we have more activities. Okay. We've got information on the district's regulations. We have, under Business Services, hold item number six, Petaluma City Elementary School District Citizens Oversight Committee, recommended motion that the board reappoint Elizabeth Markler as the business organization representative on the Petaluma City Elementary School District Citizens Oversight Committee.
So moved.
Who do I talk to about that?
Did anybody ask what she wanted to do?
Elizabeth, no.
Yes.
Yes? She said yes?
Yes.
Elizabeth can never leave the school district.
Okay. Any...
We just wanted to get Elizabeth Markler's for something.
No, I support it.
Okay. Any concerns or questions, anybody? All those in favor?
Hi.
Item seven, the 2011 audit report, recommended motion that the board accept the 2011 independent auditors' report, which includes the review of the district's budget findings, recommendations and corrections by the independent auditors, the Brinac Tryon Day and Company.
So moved.
By a second.
Mitch?
Well, yes, we have the typical audit findings that we've had in the past.
A bit more thorough in some areas than others.
Yes, yes.
How did the parents do at the football games, getting cash straight? Did they fail again this year? They did.
Part of that is boosted, but part of what happens is at the ASB level. And they are actually implementing a lot of the recommendations that we have. One example that I talked, I actually met with one of the high school student body groups this week and reviewed, you know, process and procedures. And basically, they had, you know, done what was expected of the district. The auditors have asked for an additional procedure to be, and so, they're implementing that as well. So, we continue to work with them. We continue to send them to the relevant trainings that they need to, not just the school account clerk, but the activities director, as well as at least a student to participate so that they know what their responsibilities are. So, we've been seeing that and they're learning a lot. So, we continue to make incremental progress, but this is, these are typical findings of any district.
The, there was a reference in here about some sort of training in the fall.
Yes.
I would be happy to volunteer to come to the leadership class or whenever that training is done to like, you know, instill the importance of what they do to, for the schedule of the budget. If, I don't know if that would have an impact, but it would be nice to at least...
Have the opportunity.
Have the opportunity to say, this is what's going to happen, we're going to get this audit report in January and, you know, I don't really want to see this again. It would be nice to see if it, you know, changed anything.
Well, I will definitely...
Keep that in mind.
Keep that in mind. When we schedule the meetings, I can have...
Give me a heads up.
Yes, we can have you be invited to attend when they're scheduled.
There were a couple other areas that I'm assuming that have been addressed regarding access to, you know, payroll stuff and all those.
Internal controls, yes.
Internal controls.
Absolutely.
I assume that a lot of it has to do with the reduction in staff.
Or just, yes, and sometimes not reduction, but just too much for the staff that we can't add any more staff.
Right.
So, you make alterations in your internal controls as much as you can to ensure that there's security on access and...
Second review.
Prevent, yes, and preventing fraud as much as possible.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay. A bunch of new board policies or modified first readings that we will consider again in our next meeting. Any questions about those? And that's it for, what else was consent? Future business calendar of activities for board members consideration. Our next regular meeting will be here at 6:00 PM on February fourteenth. Happy Valentine's Day. What other regular items do we have coming up for that, Steve?
I think there'll be routine. Jane, do you have a presentation?
We will have a presentation. We are working to get a presentation from both the Partnership for Children and the Upstream Project from the county.
Oh, okay.
Review?
Great. Okay. So, now we are going to adjourn to closed session. Prior to adjournment to closed session, is there anybody wishing to speak on the matters that we will be discussing in closed session? Okay.
I just have one question. Just go ahead.
You knew it.
You knew it. I just don't know. So, I'm just asking. I know that last year, you appointed him as interim and I know you could do that. I don't know what the, you know, because I've only been here for, well, I was here with Carl Long, but I wasn't part of that committee or anything. So, I don't know, I don't understand the process. And obviously, those two, it was like you go out to a search and you have a hiring committee and you give people questions and you interview them. And I know the interim thing was because of the budget thing and, as Karen McGee said, I too have been on the budget committee for a long time and, you know, we all together have made some, had to make some very big cuts. But to me, there's a difference between appointing an interim person as there is to hiring a person. I'm not saying that I don't like Mr. Bowman. That's not, that's not what I'm getting to. I'm just asking what the process is because I know you had mentioned there are three choices, but...
Right.
Is there anything that says if you do something besides an interim, you need to do something else? I mean, like for us, we have jobs at post and they're supposed to fly for this many days and you have to have people, you know, and you fly it inside or you fly it outside. So, I'm just, I'm just asking.
There is a, what you saw in the bylaws?
That's it.
That's it. We're just trying to, you know, get our arms around it as well, that's what our various options are.
Okay, well, I'm just curious.
I appreciate that, though.
Because it's not very...
It's a very good question.
It's not very, you know, clear.
Quite exactly, Mary, when you really think about it, the interview process is such that you're only hearing what people wish you to hear or they're telling you. Having Steve work as interim superintendent has been the best possible interview we possibly could have had.
But I understand what Loretta's saying. She's saying in her organization, there's defined criteria, certain...